Protect him in the mighty name of Jesus. In all faith, we ask for peace and tranquility to pray for praying Jesus' salvation.
Thank you very much. Uh, before that, I would like to invite some people to the high table. May I call on the ladies here, the other, senior and women. Please join me at the high table. Round of applause, sir. And may I also call on, uh, General Edozo. First Chairman of this branch, round of applause, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on the protocol officer of YPP. The person of担当, to call and present the gubernatorial candidate and his entourage. Round of applause, sir.
Chairman and executive members of Nigerian branch association. The Ababa Number One Bar, Council of Elders. I have seen our senior secretary. I have also seen College of Past Presidents of MB Ababa. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Your Excellency, I have been asked to introduce those you came with. But before that, let me quickly, with due respect and humility, announce to you that these are members of Number One Bar in Nigeria. They are members of the select rank of educated minority, they are social influencers. By reason of our calling and training, what they say to a large extent is what happens in the society. Your Excellency, the deputy governorship candidate, may I also please take permission to announce the members of Ababa, those of your entourage. In no particular order, I have seen our senior colleague, educator by excellence and administrator, and acting politician, Chief Mrs. Nena Awoka Abusha, is the Director General of Nana Ofoji Campaign Organization. I have also seen the incoming past Chairman of Obiumwa Local Government, who is going to speak for Obiumwa, Ugunabwa and Oshisoma Federal Constituency, the House of Representatives, Ebemike Awoku Abudabim. The next person is, uh, the humble son of His Majesty, Eze Azehan Ajona Ikonye. Prince Almeef Lainkonye is going to speak for the people of Ababa State Constituency using white hair. The next person is, another son of the side, Chinadua Abulono, who is going to speak for the Abas House and Abas State House. The arrogant brother, Akonye, advocate, extraordinary, charity diva, with potential, a friend, brother, who has been speaking for the masses, advocating and dealing problems with strict machine justice. He's going to speak for the Aba Central constituency. His name is Dr. Obony. Your Excellency, Chairman of Ababa. Your Excellency, who we are going to know as a candidate of YPP Party. Your Excellency, I would please move forward. The man who has to introduce the deputy governorship candidate, who are going to stand down to be, who will stand down to be the, the member of our branch. The man who is the deputy governorship candidate of the young progress party is a businessman. He is a creative entrepreneur and a serial investor. Oil and gas, he's an academic service host. And he's also a manager. Beyond all that, our deputy governorship candidate also has an abundance link of human kindness. It is, he is running a school for the past fourteen years. I would not have hoped he would not pay anything, not pay a dime to the purpose of that school. Stoves free, books, textbooks free, uniforms free, and even food free. His name is Dr. Chimobi Desmond Ananson. Uh, I, I think I have to stop there, but let me also introduce myself. My name is Prince Betchibo. I was a generalist before becoming a lawyer. Good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Before that, before that, let me call on the...
Gentlemen, while we are waiting for the next item on the agenda. May I welcome most of our seniors, who have our old senior Ogonya. Round of applause for Senior Ogonya. Ogonya, can you say hi to the bar? I have also cited our old Kison Akasi, senior, you are welcome. Gentlemen, like I said before, we shall be doing this, you know, as time permits. I have also seen our own anti-culture. Senior, if you are here, can you just say hello to the bar? Gentlemen, let me also recognize members of Executive Committee of our branch. Senior, you are welcome. Senior, you are welcome. I have also cited a member of Executive Committee of our branch, Mike Azorou. Please round of applause for Senior Mike Azorou. Ladies and gentlemen, you are welcome. Gentlemen, the Financial Secretary of our branch is also here. We have a tradition, we have a tradition of recognizing members of the branch in our fortunes. So as they move in, as they comment, I would be proud of them. I've mentioned the Financial Secretary of our branch. Uh, of course, we have the Vice Chairman of our branch, G. N. O. Kweeza. Who was seated beside the Chairman. We also have, uh, the Social Secretary of our branch. We have government members of the executive. Of course, I am myself, the Secretary of our branch. If, uh, you do not recognize, recognize myself. Yes, you are super, you are welcome. If I is one, that is fine. We must do not do a good thing. No association can overly engage the political actors, except the regular association, particularly of our branch of NPI. Please round of applause for MB Ababa branch. What we are doing today, we have never witnessed before. That is why this branch is unique. In our best, we have four branches. We have the MB Ababa branch, which is the number one branch in Nigeria. We have MPO Ababa branch. We have MPA Opa branch. And of course, we have MBA, this year under branch. Yes, Ahafa branch, yes, Ahafa branch, thank you, senior, also have Ahafa branch. Whatever you look at it, with all due respect to these branches, Ababa is always in the forefront. No other branch, like I said before, I say this with every sense of political responsibility, can do what we are doing today. That is why we are special. We need to hear from the political actors, what they have done before, where we are they, the state of our land, and what they want to do for us. That is the whole essence of bringing us together. Gentlemen, I've also cited, you know, Saint Kete, you are welcome. A former branch chairman, a past chairman of our branch, is also there. Ladies and gentlemen, AG Wachukwu, please, a round of applause for senior. Senior, can you please come to the high table? You cannot be hiding. Come to the high table, sir. Yes, sir. Please, a round of applause as a torch. A former chairman of this branch, AG E. Wachukwu. It is people like us, the over lawyer, as well here. Senior, you are welcome. I've also seen my brother, Bade. Bade, a senior lawyer by all standards. A junior lawyer, a lawyer who is between one to seven. Yes, sir. Ah, you are welcome, senior, please, Sir Wachukwu, senior, you are welcome, please, a round of applause for him. As of course, my brother, Prince Mbaeje. Mbaeje, you are welcome. We have everything in, at the bar. We have friends, we have, uh, princesses, we have everything. Ababa is properly rich. Gentlemen, today, we shall be having a festive outing. On Monday, we had our own Alex Otie, Alex Otie was here, and it was a good outing. Today, among those believe, and as we did in page Alex Otie on Monday, we shall also engage engineer Amin Mawaz. A fine gentleman, who I believe has the love for the bar. Ladies and gentlemen, may I, may I at this juncture hand over the microphone to the branch chairman, chairman, MB Ababa branch. I owe him thanks for, for the presentation of Golden Mount. Please, a round of applause to the chairman.
No, the partner will take a letter. No, I think, take a letter, uh, people, um, we do this with our own, we do it with the, uh, we do it with our partner, uh, Opa Lanai. So people, um, our team, my, he, he, my team, they, Nigeria, Aba Association, Aba branch. Um, they, MP, they, they, uh, I can't remember, uh, uh, I can't remember, uh, I can't remember.
You are all special. This is your home. We welcome you. And I know you are also welcome. If they walk home, I have a disagreement with you very seriously. You will settle up. Let me also welcome you. Chairman Aslami Bosula. Oh, Jelele, I'm with you. I am a radio people. I'm a lapa, I'm a man. They're the same. I'm a lapa, I'm a man. Hey, do it. Hey, do it. Hey, do it. Eh, oh, you so good. I'm a homie. Oh, Jelele, mama, I'm a chara cha. I'm a homie, don't be angry. Don't be angry, my momma, don't be angry, chara cha. Aslamah, Jemile, Shonkai, Yambu, Mama, Woko, Ma. Oh, my, I'm a little bit loud. My momma, my deputy, to us, we're mama. You don't have to be angry, you're a good person. You're a nice person, you're a good person. Thank you very much, I'm a waiter. Eh, you don't need to be angry, you don't want to be angry. Na, you're a man. I told you. Mama, my face is red. I'm a lapa, ma. Eh, I'm a pochi. I'm a pochi, I'm a man. I'm a pochi, I'm a man. I'm a pochi, I'm a man. I'm a pochi, Jemile, Shonkai. Aslamah, I'm a pochi, Jemile, Shonkai. Oh, Jelele, I'm a... Oh, Jelele, I'm a classic. Oh, Jelele, I'm a classic, I'm a good person. Oh, Koko, I'm a young. Nana. I'm a malai, I'm a good person. And if you're a bad person, I'm a... I'm a bad person. And if you're a bad person, you're a good person, I'm a... You're a good person, I'm a bad person. I'm a sea, I'm a water. I'm a water. I'm a water, I'm a water. I'm a black woman, I'm a black woman. Oh, I'm a black woman, I'm a black woman. You may be like, you're too good, you're not a bad person. I'm a good person, I'm a good person, I'm a good person. But I'm a good person, I'm a good person. Oh, I'm a good person, I'm a good person. I'm a good person, I'm a good person. Now, I'm a bad person, I'm a bad person. So, you better be my mother. Me, the soya. I'm a man, I'm a bad person. I'm a man, I'm a good person. Eh, you're a bad person, I'm a bad person. Like, I'm a good person, I'm a good person. But come on, you see, like, I'm a good person. You're not so good. I'm a good person.
Gentlemen, a round of applause for the senior project of Abba branch. Senior Nlo Kuku, senior project of Nigeria. Before I introduce the chairman of our branch for his, eh... For his speech. Let me also recognize, I have an assistant secretary. You may always recognize. Before we, eh, former social secretary of our branch. If you are welcome. Eh... Like I said, we shall be doing this from time to time as... Respected members of the branch. Our common and our own senior director. Senior, you are welcome. Senior, elude, eh, Oku. Gentlemen, a round of applause. These are members of MBA Abba branch. May I now, at this juncture. Invite the chairman of the number one branch of MBA. I owe it. Gentlemen, a round of applause for the chairman of our branch for his speech.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is an address presented by the Chairman, the General Association of Abba Branch. My humble self, Enos E. Dwehu. An interactive meeting of members of MBA Abba branch. With the Nigerian and other relevant candidates of front... Of frontline political parties in Abia State. Held at the Bar Center, I call premises today. May it be the 18th of January, 2023. His Excellency. Engineer A. N. A. Wafo. Eh, the regional candidate of YPP. Abia State's 2023 election. His Excellency. The deputy governorship candidate of YPP. Dr. Chi Mobi Desmond Ironson. The political giga mouths, we know you too well. Name now, Opel. You are welcome, ma. The Emile Past Chairman of Odeanwa, LGA. Ibe, Michael, Roku. Happy, happy, we know you. You are welcome. Please, I am a free, you go back. Our own please. You are welcome, sir. She be the, I'm a lover. We welcome you, sir. Our own Emperor Wana. Eh, a more aggressive. You are most welcome, sir. Our own Ben, Ben Chukwueze, I'm a colleague. You are welcome. Maybe I did so, so. Yes. The senior project of Nigeria. Oh, Kuku, eh, the CNO Kuku. You are welcome, sir. Past chairman of MBA Abba branch. Enas and senior colleagues. Ladies and gentlemen. I need me to spark on the already established protocols. It is indeed with great pleasure and excitement. That I welcome the political adults in Abia State. To this very auspicious interactive meeting. With the members of the bar. Which is the first of its kind in the history of Ababa. It is indeed a good making. As it will mark the beginning of mutually beneficial engagements. Between the bar and incoming government in Abia State. Hopefully, from the first day of inauguration, May 29, 2023. There is no doubt that members of the bar are legal practitioners. By virtue of our trained and vantage position in the society. Our open up holders with capacity and reach. To operate on the influence, the outcome of elections. And therefore. We consider it an out of irresponsibility. On our part. If we keep both. And indifferent to the political developments in our Abia State of Abia. Where we live and practice our profession. We cannot continue to be politically correct. In our choices of candidates. To steer the ship of the state. Or to continue in our selfish and sheepish attachment to political party. Religious tribal or religious affiliations. Which are in the bed of our political development in Nigeria. Our imagination. Our initiative. And our imagination will determine whether. We build a society where progress is the servant of our needs. Or a society where old values and new visions are buried under unbridled growth. As critical stakeholders in that estate projects. We most conscious we are natively. A part of the move to make our society great. As a quote by Lyndon B. Johnson. The great American president in the 1964 titled Great Society. I quote. Your imagination. Your initiative. And your imagination will determine whether. We build a society where progress is the servant of our needs. Or a society where old values and new visions are buried under unbridled growth. So, in your time, we have the opportunity. To move not only towards the rich society and the powerful society. But upwards to the great society. I would recommend to us that the less of fear in this position, you put our... Gentlemen. We think about a hundred or two hundred persons physically present in this hall. But by the sheer power that the open up holders influence us. And leaders of our different rights. I can boldly say, and without any fear of contradictions. That, very simply, and you are correct. You will be discussing with more than a thousand persons, or even ten, ten thousand persons here. Or even much more. This is because by reason of some special favor that the gods have given us. We have inherent capacity to influence and hold the opinions. Of more than ten times the number of persons physically present in this hall. And invariably, the outcome of the elections. It was John Carper Powers, an English philosopher, critic and poet. His book, The Meaning of Culture, published in 1929. In chapter 10, there are who said. There is nothing more expressive of a barbarous and stupid lack of culture. Than the half of conscious attitude so many of us sleep in. Of taking for granted when we see weak. We are really helpless, drifting, unhappy people. That is by reason of some special merit in us. Or by reason of some special favor towards us. That the gods have given us an advantage over such persons. Without intending to resent the manifestos of the parties and their candidates. We, as legal practitioners. And stakeholders in the administration of justice sector. We look favorably to the political party and candidate. Who has in this program maintaining the rule of law. Because provision of conducive working environment. For the magistrate and judicial officers in the state. And generally, giving the judiciary, the top arm of the government, this prime of test in the government. We, as legal practitioners, while we do not look up to the government. To provide our personal needs, we rightly look up to the government to provide conducive environments. Where we practice our trade. I assume they be aware, his excellency, just recently. On the 24th day of November, 2022. We organize a watching fundraising ceremony to equip our law library. The project is ongoing. But need me, ladies and gentlemen, to announce to us. That his excellency, engineer, Nana Wafo. Just give to us two days ago. He will put some of five hundred thousand naira for that project. This project is provided us by the judiciary, a standard law library. For our research needs. Or, a way to access the body. Is the improvement of a government that have been voted in. And we take the using the scarce resources of the state. To improve the state and the well-being of the residents. Both parties to this interactive meeting, the politicians of the one part. And the lawyers on the other part should see the opportunity of this forum as a privilege. And not a right. But therefore, call on my colleagues. To make this their contributions constructive and respectful. One of the parties will be tolerated to be confrontational or hostile. To the other, whatsoever. At the end of the meetings. We shall come out with a communicate. Which will reflect our collective opinion. Of the various political parties and their candidates. And which position we shall vigorously disseminate and propagate to the public. And to persons within our sphere of influence. May I, on behalf of the ten members of the Nigerian Bar Association of Abba Branch. Welcome our guests, the political adults in Abia State. On whose shoulders the government of Abia State will necessarily follow. Come May 29, 2023. And urge you to feel free and at home with us. In highlighting your programs for our Abia State, Abia State, causeful state. We shall, collectively, make the difference. Thank you very much, and you are all welcome in Jesus' name.
Gentlemen, a round of applause for the chairman of the Nigerian branch. We do not want to say, but we can have one, one hands. Put your hands together for the chairman of the Nigerian branch. Gentlemen, we also welcome our own senior, Richard, the gentleman. Senior, you are welcome. Senior, Richard, the gentleman, senior, you are welcome. Gentlemen, sir, Richard, the gentleman, we have seen you, it's Mungu. We have the... Nangio Kure. Senior, you are welcome. Gentlemen, please, a round of applause for members of the bar who are coming. We also have our own Nangio Kure. Yes, I have also cited our own high chief. Senior, you are welcome. Obonwa PK, yes. High chief, Obonwa PK. Senior, your name is complete. You are welcome, sir. I have also cited our own advocate. And others who I may not be able to, you know, mention one after the other because of our time. Let me now invite a political officer. Of the campaign council of YPP. It is our own. A distinguished lawyer to come and met. Or introduce other candidates of the political party to make...
So, six years ago, you all recognized me as your special friend. And as a distinguished friend of the bar. So, I am here today to remind you that I am still your friend. And that that oil has not run dry. This day, the oil has been. And we have come to use that which God has blessed us with to bless Abias. My candidate, my principal, our candidate. The incoming governor of Abia State, engineer, A. N. A. Wafo. Is the most prepared candidate in this parliamentary race for 2023. So, I am not going to speak for him because he is here in person. So, he will speak for himself. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you, Alkarbuna. I also remember, eh, friend of the bar. Why we are wanting to remember your friend of the bar. Distinctive colleagues. Our guy, I'm sick in Amis. Chairman of the bar. Your excellencies. This is the time we've waited for. I have a mission of going to the bar and your excellency. To introduce the man who is going to mount the saddle in a couple of weeks. I would not ask you much of your time. But I'm a man that his parents were waiting of. His parents were smart enough to give me the best start. In Sandra, her education in a central school. That is a strong team, and also a good program. It was at a central school, learned the rules of humanity, the way that they... Central school can learn all the foods of the Holy Spirit and how to administer them. Now, I'm gonna start hearing about the need of human kindness, the spirit of unity. The man I want to introduce to you took time. To learn about meticulousness, precision. It took time to learn about preciseness. It took time to learn about efficiency and effectiveness. He is still an engineer, good at training based on the knowledge of... And our own area of Nigeria. So, I can proudly announce to you that he is in a trial. The distinction of this, whether his parents had riches or health, he was also determined to make his own money. While he then shares an income. He wants back, wants small contracts, he works as a landlord. One of the businesses that constructed the indigenous state in Ososoma. The distinction of this, he does stop there. He didn't want to develop a family there, and say, I go to the bank. Seeking for a low start, but as soon as he come, the bigens construction company, indigenous south east of Nigeria. The distinction of this is the chief executive officer of Turner End Group. Like a mustard seed, Turner End start, construction, gas, vehicle, organizing, finance services. Half a thousand million, financial, consumer, and other services that give money, legitimate. The distinction of this. He is the founder of the Lord of Mental Position and Judge to Be the Support of United States. A few people who are important to the sponsor that government, the man also announced to you. He is the founder of H1N1 Foundation. While others are busy and buying energy and retail services, I can tell you for free. That the biggest largest endowment fund for kidney patients. Is the one that is sponsored by H1N1 Foundation. I can also tell and commit for free. That H1N1 Foundation, beginning transplant as invested about 200 million, without noise. Let me also tell you that no other union or union that has supported students in Abia State. More than the Nigerian for H1N1 Foundation. It is like, if you are not affected, you are infected. There are many thousands of students who have traveled back to history. He said that he wrote, he had them to write down, he based it for them, but currently, he is having as many scholars as possible. The distinction of this, you can verify this on the available evidence. That is, any other institution in Abia State, you do not have scholars of H1N1 Foundation. While others, we talk about what they are shown. While others, we talk about what they do, as I speak to you. His businesses, his account, everywhere in the state. May I also tell you that the rules of the Genshin, the Genshin, from the Genshin, from the Genshin. That instead of a purpose, when you spend your watch money on furniture exchange. That he brought that to get. That if you go to that, you will realize, for the Genshin, you wouldn't... You wouldn't imagine what you have, as you hoped. There is no point going to Dubai or Turkey to run for a fortune. The man here, thinking Abia. Patriotism at its best is currently employing over 1,200 applicants in the schools. Distinctive colleagues, your excellencies. I have the pleasure to invite. The most creative investor of all the governmentship candidates. The most serious entrepreneur of all the governmentship candidates. The most prepared, the most competent. The man whose meat of human kindness flows like stupendous wealth. May I please invite the son of the father of the two of Abia State. The man who called above, he will play better than Agent N. A. N. A. Shuma. What a... Na 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 na. We shall give you this one, sir. Zobu, zobu, you're a good man.
Good evening, all. Mr. Chairman. President of MBA Abba. And distinguished. Ladies, gentlemen. Good evening, all. And we want to appreciate. Each and every one of you. For giving us this opportunity. For us to interact with you. For the betterment of God's own state, Abia State. Abia is a very wonderful state. A state rich in natural resources. A state with men and women with the capacity to drive development in God's own state. What we've been lacking for so many years is what we are doing today. I want to use the opportunity to thank MBA Abba for this wonderful, special, and very unique insight. For any person to think of being a governor of a state. You must show capacity. You must show reverence. You must show competence. You must show energy. You must show passion. And you must show that you have the fear of God in you to drive development in God's own state, to do a government. I also want to. Encourage and advise the MBA. On the issue of this engagement. It is very important that we should be. Very, very thorough, not being biased. And without any form of having interest in the particular person because power belongs to God, and God is Lord. When my friend, my brother, but not my colleague, the secretary of MBA. When he was talking about people's engagement on Monday. He referred to my elder brother, my friend, as one of their own. The last time I checked, the Labour Party candidate is not a lawyer. He referred to us, one of our, Oho.
It's private code.
Don't worry, I'm, I have the hand before. When I'm done, leave your own, I'll be done. Few months ago. Some members of the MBA. Also went to Ishia Langua. To do what is called form of what endorsing a candidate. For me, as a person, I saw it as very unprofessional. Because for those who do get the best with what you want thorough. Please, please. Is a form of what advice. Because like I said, like I'll keep saying. Nobody in this hall knows who the governor of this state will be. It's only God, and God is Lord, and God's governor will be. My name is engineer, A. N. A. Shuma Wafo. A native of Butumochi, with Ososoma, LGA. A passionate Abia. A serial investor. And entertainer, and a lover of mankind. I am the YPP gubernatorial candidate for the 2023 election. I am here to interact with distinguished members of what are... Your position in this state is one that. When we consult you. And we interact. Based on the point of interaction. I don't think that any gubernatorial candidate will defect from what we have been able to discuss here. So, I'm here to share my own manifesto, work plans, ideas with us. work plans, ideas with us, with the global. Abia is a state of over four point five million persons. For so many years, the problem we have in this state is a problem of leadership based on preparedness. Leadership based on competence. Leadership based on passion and leadership based on the fear of God. Today, I'm here to let you know that the major issue we have in this state is the issue of high cost of governance. You have you don't have enough to pay salaries. You don't have enough to drive development. You don't have enough to be able to do things that will bring salary to the system. And as a leader, you engage in very expensive lifestyle. A governor of this state has no business flying a private jet. Work workers have not been fed. A governor of this state has no business living in a flex when the missionaries are being born for so many months. A governor of this state has no business living like a king when they are treating for so many years to be fed. What do you do? All we need to do is to crush the cost of what governs. On monthly basis, you save over six hundred million naira. For you to be able to play the part of the savers. By doing this, to a very reasonable extent, you will do some level of things in this state. This state, where the money owed for civil servants, local governments, government agencies, starts at sixteen point seven billion. If you add missionaries at a treaty, it starts at over thirty-nine point six billion. As a governing candidate, you must prepare yourself with this gift for you to know what you are going to face as governor. Because government is a god job. You can't say, I'm not the one that enjoy that. Once that person's taken a step back, you stand for their accounting. What do you do? On monthly basis, you tell yourself you are going to save six hundred million. If you do that in ten months, that will go to six billion. In twenty months, that will go to twelve billion. In eighteen months, the primary budget is sixteen point seven billion naira. In thirteen months, must have saved eighteen billion naira and played the part of the rate of sixteen point seven of what billion. You can't wait to find to go one double. When you think about revenue, revenue. In twenty sixteen, we did a house renovation in Aba. Only in Aba you know with our consultants. Because for you to aspire to be governor is not something we just wake up. You feel that be a governor because you have the special resources you've got to be a governor. No, it takes time. You prepare yourself. So, for so many years, over several years, the young man before you have prepared myself to saddle you as governor. I ask myself this question. How could we be able to tackle the issue of salary payment in all those states without looking at fat or jack? Because for us, what has made the legal state financially strong with a high level fiscal tenes is the farmers. In nineteen ninety-nine, about when they created the local government break houses, or past analysis, they are fat and they are jack. They had to think outside the bus. That is why today you can see legal states with very, very high IGR of over fifty billion naira. I ask myself this question. How can we run this government if we don't get one double from the federal government? We started with buildings only in Aba. Whether anybody likes it or not, Aba is the economic hub of this state. Where you have persons from Anuchipu, from Ojafya, from Anambra, from Mino, from Aba. Everybody invested in Aba. Nobody can go and claim that. Aba belongs to us to him. Everybody invested in what Aba to make Aba the economic hub of this state. We realize in our survey that we have over five hundred and sixty thousand buildings in Aba alone. Not to Maya, not to Ojafya, just in Aba. Six years after building took into last year, realize we have over six hundred thousand buildings in Aba. Ask yourself when you provide everything that could make life meaningful, infrastructure, hospitals, security, schools, everything that could make people to have confidence in government and you ask a house owner, one building, not the number of persons in that house, one building, the house owner to pay five thousand naira for what? Who will pay? Just five thousand. Multiply five thousand naira by six hundred thousand buildings. That gives you three what billion. In one month, three what billion. That is just that, buildings, not other sources of what revenue. And before that happens, we must make sure that we enhance the processes of revenue collection to that we destroy and eliminate government position in this state. We will lose automation in the collection of revenue and also empower the board of directors of what revenue. And the governor himself must have the political will to be able to do that. Whether any person is your brother, your mother, your friend, your family, every action that you take must be the one that will be for the betterment of Abia, to the glory of God. With that, you can at least have five billion, just only here. If you multiply five billion by twelve, that is your yearly revenue, you're talking about sixty billion per annum just on IGR. Not fat, not jack, not other sources of what revenue from federal government or Indian government agencies. Sixty billion. As an engineer, all things being able, I can tell you that two hundred million naira could give you a one kilometer road. One kilometer road. If you divide sixty billion by two hundred million, that gives you three hundred kilometer of roads. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, from Osisoma, George Shaw, the path is less than six kilometers. From number one as a road to Patagonia is less than nine point three kilometers. From the starting point of Ora Ta where it relates to Patagonia to the express is less than seven kilometers. Three hundred kilometer of roads in one year from our revenue, not fat, not jack. Imagine a new Abia. Three hundred kilometers. We have seventy local governments in this state. Let me talk about multiplication. I talk about infrastructure. Let me tell us the impact on the economy of Abia State. Three hundred kilometers. We have seventy local governments. Divide three hundred by seventeen. That is each local government in this state will be experiencing not less than eighteen kilometer roads every year. Only in Ojafya nots, only in Anuchipu, only in Ojafya, only in Abasals, only in Abanots. At the same time, will be expressing eighteen kilometer what roads. Let me share with us how that could affect the economy of this state. When you are involved in that level of construction, a sand seller, a carpenter, someone that sells cement, sand, food, these food vendors, every sector of the Abia economic world activated because they are what, busy. When that happens, the GDP of Abia State will do. And the per capita income